Agenda meeting. Council agenda Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting at January 5th, 2021. Posting of notice adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirement to the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020 where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and in Newark Star Ledger on December 22nd, 2020 and was forwarded by fax to the local newspapers on December 18th, 2020. No council meetings are videotaped and aired on cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.procipiny.net. And I'll ask everyone to please stand for the flag salute. May I turn it over to you, please?
Thank you, Clerk. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Now go ahead into the roll call. Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Fred Carr, Archbishop's Attorney Jim Lott, and CFO Juan Arribei. Council President, we have a quorum. Please begin.
Please begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, January 19th, 2021. At 7:00 p.m. We have the regular meeting at February 2nd at 7:00 p.m. is the agenda meeting. Approval of minutes. Agenda meeting of 12:120. Moving into presentations and reports. May I turn it over to you?
Oh, thank you, Clerk. Um. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. And, uh, you know, as we boldly step into this, uh, new year 2021 and leave 2020 behind us. I want to invite everyone to watch the Precipiny State of the Township address, which will be presented this Thursday, January 7th at 7:00, 7:00 and 7:00. On the township website, social media, and, uh, video on the Go Channel 21. Uh, this year's address will obviously be different from our typical in-person gatherings, but I feel with our continued social distance, it's important as ever to provide residents and council members an opportunity to hear from me and be involved in our plans in the year ahead. I hope you'll join me January 7th for the State of the Township presentation. I look forward to working with all of you in the coming year and into the future. Um, and with that said, I want to wish everyone a safe, happy, and hopefully very positive new year, and, uh, I am very hopeful that the best is very is yet to come in 2021. God bless you all. Thank you, Clerk. That ends my, uh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving along to the Township Attorney.
I have no report. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Township Council.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question about, uh, you know, now with this new variant of the virus and the cases in New Jersey going, going up, do we have any more information about that that, uh, that is available, how Morris County is doing, how the town is doing? No?
Councilwoman, I mean, where we have a separate, a separate chart, if you will, with those people in Jersey who have possibly tested with the new variant or just not. Uh, the data is not there. These are eachs, I think only, is that one person in New York from last night's news had the new variant. And from what I've seen, uh, and read, the both of the, the vaccines are, are still 95% how with a new, if I could use the word, the new variant of the COVID virus. It's faster, but it's the same virus. It mutated.
Yeah, I understand that. Do we have any information about the, oh, they expect a surge as well, and the cases are, as I said, going up, and they expect a surge on top of that?
Uh, yeah, the surge they're talking about right now, the surge we're in right now is the post-Christmas surge. Uh, I've seen or talked in my discussions today with Carlo, no conversation with regards to, if you could use, a surge as a result of a new variant.
And as far as, are we experiencing more cases now through the Christmas surge and the New Year's, New Year's surge?
It's, it's continued, uh, pretty steady since, uh, post, um, Thanksgiving. We're still up, you know, at, uh, you know, 40 and 50 on Sundays.
Okay.
Has the, has the has Carlo, um, or you, Mr. Carr, are there plans in place to deal with the surge? And/or the new variant and/or the vaccine rollout? And I know Town Hall has been closed. Has that been working? Do you think in order to keep the cases down and the community spread down?
So we've, uh, in, uh, Go Town has been closed, and we still had cases, uh, within the employees. Uh, they have got them because they still have to go to ShopRite. Uh, or here, there, and everywhere. Uh, most of our cases here in the township have been, I call them secondary contacts. Uh, people with second jobs, you know, pick them up, bring them home, uh, and then they end up quarantining the other members of the family. But, uh, since our big surge, if you will, or our big episode back in, uh, November, we've been, and I use the word loosely, lucky, uh, on a subsequent, uh, surge. In my conversation with Carlo on the rollout, uh, if you, uh, go to the Morris County website, they have a plan for the rollout for the mass um, vaccination site, which will be up in, in one of the ones chosen by the state up in, uh, Rockaway. Uh, Rockaway Township, up at the Sears Mall. Once that starts rolling, they're still gearing up to have that now. Uh, where we're, where we are right now across the state is, is the, not the lack, is not a lack of people who would like the shot. It's just a lack of the ability of to give the shot that's available. But people are getting, people are getting vaccinated. It's just going to take some time to roll out and get everybody lined up, and they're still doing the tier one people, the healthcare professional.
Yeah, I mean, everything that I have read that relying on the vaccine as a solution is not prudent, that the best way to continue the slowing of the spread of this is through social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera. Um, you mentioned ShopRite at the beginning. I, I am unaware of community spread in supermarkets. In fact, I've been under the impression that supermarkets are an incredibly safe place to be as, especially as a shopper. Um, are you aware of community spread in the local grocery stores?
Well, when I say ShopRite, I mean, when you leave your house and you go outside.
Right, I think, um, I think it's important to clarify that the vast majority of the spread that's happening is in small gatherings indoors in people's homes.
Correct, but somebody brings it in and they got it from somewhere. Uh, and so you are correct. The, as a governor refers to these gatherings of knuckleheads. And that's his term of art for the last nine months. Uh, uh, is, is how we do that. But, you know, the spread in our employees in the map in the, in the population is from gatherings or from being out of the house. I mean, we still have to exist. It's now January. We've been at this almost 10 months. Uh, the use of masks will not decrease, uh, the requirement, if I use the word, is, uh, will, will still be here in Town Hall. We're efforting, as you saw from the email, from opening Town Hall back to the employees on the 19th with a possible return of the public on the week following that. But again, those strict rules of mask wearing, social distancing, hopefully, temperature checks, hand washing, those things are not, not slacking off until we hit a vaccination rate, which will provide as, you know, some kind of immunity for the public and ourselves.
So is the, or is the, uh, Town Hall open to the public?
Not now, but it's not, not today. No, ma'am. It'll be, we're, we're looking at opening the Town Hall. If you, the email that I sent out on Monday, uh, possible opening day of the 25th, but again, right now by appointment only. If you come into Town Hall right now and you beat on the door, the door is locked. Uh, and there's signs right by the front door, big posters that say, you know, call, open by appointment only.
Let's try to undo that.
We have a lot of things that have to be done. It's, especially in construction. You know, we have really taken a beating down in construction with permits and building and developers and people trying to get their projects done, uh, with their inability to, to meet with our construction people, uh, in our, for the last two months. November and December, you know, we were closed that entire month there, a backlog considerably, uh, and we are getting just a lot of, um, you know, concerned individuals and, and projects being held up. And what we're trying to do is strike that balance between moving the process forward and protecting our employees. It is a delicate balance. And I think that, uh, you know, with temperature checks and the continued masking and those kinds of things, we will, we will be fine.
What I've seen in construction, a lot of the, since everybody is isolated and in their homes, a lot more than they normally are. A lot of home projects have been taking place, and a lot of them require permits. So they have contractors ready to do the work, but they're having trouble making appointments, permit, so they can do some work in their homes or outside their homes.
That is correct. That's a, that's part of the volume and plus the bigger projects that we have coming on. But yes, you know, people are at home. They're putting the decks in. They're doing all this work that they couldn't do before, and they're waiting. Not just for the permits, but they're subsequently waiting for the inspections to keep it, to keep it moving. The challenge of the inspector of, you know, going into somebody's house to look at your water heater. Nothing as simple as that. Uh, and there are ways around that, you know, it can be signed off by, by the plumber and he has to take his word for it and inspect it at a later time. But that's a slippery slope, uh, council, council, and we really don't want to go that, too, that too far. We only expect for safety.
I think the slippery slope is doing the same thing again and expecting a different outcome in terms of community spread inside Town Hall, but that's just me.
Well, I think that's something that probably could be evaluated again when we see what happens with this variant being more contagious and, uh, where it is when you decide to go back to, uh, you know, somewhat normal operations.
Agreed.
Okay, um, anyone else from Town Council?
Well, may I speak to what, um, what the business administrator just spoke of? Um, when we do return, uh, start having employees return full-time. Okay. Besides having temperature check stations upstairs and downstairs at Town Hall that will also register if people are masking and telling them to mask. It'll keep a record of who's coming in and out for contact tracing reasons. Um, also, we have purchased our own steamer, so instead of having a company coming in to do it, we can do it ourselves on a weekly basis to steam the, the building ourselves. Um, and again, we are, we, we are open now, but only by appointment only. Uh, this is to limit the in and out and the walking around of people to, you know, limit the exposure to the public and exposure to township employees. Um, I, I hear what Councilmember Peterson is saying. We have no intentions of doing it exactly the way we did it before. Um, right now, this is a plan that is flexible that we would like to do. But quite frankly, Fred and I look at those numbers all the time, and based on those, it's going to ultimately determine when and if we open. But we felt it was our duty to let you know what we had in those pencil plans, as it were. We have an intention of bringing all the employees back after Martin Luther King Day. We have an intention of opening up to the public by appointment only, again, the following, following week. But just on, on understanding that and that could change based on what we see with the numbers, because although the predictions and the experts are saying that this month and next month are going to be very difficult. Thank you, uh, Council President and Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I have something. We're on the council, township, council committees?
Uh, not on the committees, uh, yet. Uh, Council President, uh, we're going to go there in, in one second. Um, no one else from council has any other comments, correct? Okay, moving along then to the Business Administrator Fred Ricar.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Township Clerk, I have no report. Uh, Council President, we are now on the Township Offices and Committees Report.
Okay, I'd just like to give a brief report on Craftsman Farms. Um, I'm going to read their report. Last April, with the log house doors closed for tours, we began expanding upon experimenting with new ways to connect. To better stay in touch during ever-evolving circumstances, our quarterly newsletter became weekly e-newsletters. We adapted educational courses and member programs into fresh formats for online consumption. On-site museum shop specials became popular e-blast flash sales. Social media engagement on Facebook, Instagram, and Pine Interest, I don't know what that is, was vastly expanded, and while we have aimed to keep this content fresh, we have also worked on making it more in-depth and meaningful. Here is a look back at the list of this year's virtual programs. Eight virtual multi-session courses with Dr. Jonathan Clancy, Director of Collections and Preservation. These are the eight topics he covered. Living the Simple Life, the Arts and Crafts Movement at Home. Icons of the 20th Century Design. Craftsman Utopia, Gustav Stickley's Craftsman Farms. Making Her Mark, Women of the American Arts and Crafts Movement. The Creative Spark, Rethinking Decoration in the Arts and Crafts Movement. The Craftsman, The Life and Work of Gustav Stickley. The Restorative Power of Craft. A Very Craftsman Christmas. Then they had four-member executive virtual forms of field tours. The Gamble House in Pasadena, California. Frank Lloyd Wright Smith House, Bloomfield Hills, Illinois, uh, MI. The Harvey Ellis Bungalow and Crabtree Farm, Lake Bluff, Illinois. Uh, Public Pottery, Detroit, Michigan. Then they had seven virtual member-exclusive programs. The Virtual Exhibit, Open Reception, Things Brought by the United Crafts, An Expression of Modern Life. Furniture 101, A Visit to Bruce Johnson's Workshop, Parts One and Two. A Conversation with Herb Stratford, Director of Gustav Stickley, American Craftsman. Log House Open Doors, A Virtual Tour. Education Center, Design Team Panel Discussion. Virtual Craftsman, Craftsmas Party. And the programs were well-attended, and in fact, many of the people that wrote in want these type of virtual tours to continue in the future, even after the pandemic is over. They, they enjoy them so much. So I just wanted to share that with you, that, uh, a creative way of still reaching out to the public, uh, from Craftsman Farms. That's, uh, the end of my report. Thank you.
Council President, is that, are they charged for those tours?
Yes.
That's great. That's another stream of money for them, right?
Exactly, that.
That's great.
That, that became the primary, so, other than their gala, their virtual gala, this was the primary function, and they did surprisingly well, a lot better than they anticipated.
That's great.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Um, engineering report? None. Correspondence, none. We're going to look into bids taken. December 17th, 2020 Yard Waste Transportation and Disposal, uh, Dash Recycling slash recycling, to be taken, none quotations, proposal qualifications. December 16th, 2020 Affordable Housing Administrative Agent. Uh, moving along to the public hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by, um, Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. The floor is open. Uh, for the attendees, you all have five minutes to speak on any matter. Uh, you will speak. After the five minutes, uh, you will be muted, and then if you have, uh, and if questions came up, uh, either the council or the administration will address your questions. With that being said, let's take a look at the list to see who, uh, his hand is up. I have, uh, Daniel Byers. Let's please unmute Daniel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Daniel. How are you?
I'm doing all right. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you very much to the council, uh, for giving me this opportunity to speak. Uh, as you said, my name is Daniel Byers, and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Solar Landscape, which is a solar project developer based in Asbury Park. The reason I'm speaking to you today is to, uh, share my excitement in informing the council that we are applying to the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities with a year-two community solar project in Precipiny. Uh, what we do is we put solar panels on large industrial rooftops, and what the community solar program allows us to do is use the power from these solar energy systems to power homes throughout the local communities where they are placed. Uh, those, those receiving energy from the project do not need to have any solar panels on their rooftops. This project will provide a 20% discount in its electricity cost to everyone that subscribes. There are no fees and no long-term contracts for subscribing to this project. Uh, 51% of electricity sold through this project will go to low and moderate income residents, and of course, all of the community solar projects together serve to prevent tons of carbon dioxide from entering the atmosphere every year. This project is set to be located in Precipiny. It'll be able to power approximately 70 homes in the area. However, in order for this project to come to fruition, it will need to be selected for approval by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities when they review all of the year-two community solar applications. Hence why I'm speaking to you today. In bringing this project to your attention, I'm hoping to open a line of communication with the council and learn more about how best I could share more information about this project with you. The goal is that in a future meeting, this council would pass a resolution in support of our particular project, as have other municipalities with other projects we have developed, including in South Brunswick, Millville, Pensville, East Hanover, and Neptune. These resolutions are very helpful when the project goes in front of the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, when they decide which projects to approve. This year, the project application deadline is February 5th, so I was hoping to introduce myself, Solar Landscape, and this project to you so that we can discuss it more and hopefully see the council pass a resolution in support of this project and demonstrate their commitment to the community solar program. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel. Uh, let's go ahead and mute Daniel.
Well, I have a question for Daniel.
Okay.
Um, where in Precipiny at Route 46 are you planning to put these?
Uh, this would be located, uh, on, uh, 277 US Highway 46. Um, and if you have, uh, further questions, I mean, obviously we can discuss it now, but uh, kind of the, my goal with introducing this project to you, telling you a little bit about what we do and what the community solar program is, is so that if you are considering, uh, a resolution to, to support it or want to learn more about it, I could, uh, reach out to you in any number of ways, um, to, to further discuss the project and kind of what community solar is and what we're hoping to achieve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, I think Nick Homiak, his hand is up. Let's unmute Nick.
I can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, Nick.
Um, on the, uh, resolution, it says JCPNL agreement with the wastewater uh, uh, plant. Is that a, an attempt to replace the diesel with solar, uh, panels on the, uh, on the wastewater plant? Uh, that, that would be, uh, a, a positive thing. Uh, I'd like to remind Mayor Soriano that on the 7th, there's also a Board of Education, uh, public, uh, web, uh, meeting that corresponds with his time. I, 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 I think that, uh, they shouldn't conflict like that. It's like the same thing, two different towns. Township of Precipiny and Township of Zippiny Education, but I think it's, uh, inappropriate for the Board of Education to, uh, schedule a parallel meeting at the same time the mayor is going to make his, uh, address. And I still feel very strongly that, uh, the Precipiny Planning and Zoning Board should have members of an environmental commission that sit as members of those two entities. And, uh, even though we're in the Highlands Conformance now, whenever that really takes off, I hope it, it'll help. But a lot of that is still volunteer, and I'm not even exactly clear on what that means overall. And my personal opinion is that we're still outdated in our thinking about the world. Uh, engineering and property rights, but we have to start thinking in ecological senses, in the scientific terms of ecology. And ecology is not just, uh, recycling and, you know, trying to do something on an individual level. It's a, it's a science that's that represents the forces of life and succession and how we fit in or don't fit in and how we become our own worst enemies. And I would think our example of our water problems that we now have is a form of ecological emergent, uh, property that if we had the right people looking at things, we could have saw this, uh, ahead of time. And, uh, there's a pile of dirt sitting in the park across from the community center, and I was wondering what they were going to do with that dirt. And, uh, I noticed that the park, I even have to wonder whether that park should have been put in that spot, because if you look at the, uh, uh, ecology maps, uh, the landscape interactive maps, that area is a wetland. And, and if you look, there's, uh, right down the slope and everything, it's, it's, it's a wetland, the community center, all of that, the golf course is all in, in, uh, open waters, repairing zones, wetlands. But are they going to fill in that park with the dirt to try to compensate for the, uh, the groundwater? And the groundwater is very close to, to the surface there, so I don't know what they're going to accomplish. Uh, let me see if I have anything else here. Oh, yeah. How long will this, how long does a person have to be delinquent in their taxes before they're penalized? Uh, and I think it's relevant because if we're giving pilot deals away to developers, when we, everything used to be tax, tax ratables, and these corporations have all these big tax evasion schemes for a regular homeowner or a person, what, how long do you have to be delinquent in your taxes before you're penalized? And what exactly is the penalty? And, uh, am I correct? Say, is Pat Pitachi on the Transparency Committee? Is she?
Yes, she's on the.
Yeah, and just for curiosity, I, I hate to bring this up for the new year, but is the Transparency Committee or the auditor looking into what happened to the $18 million that was in the water and sewer surplus that miraculously disappeared?
All right, Nick, time is up. Time's up, Nick. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Nick. Um, let's go ahead and mute Nick. I'll turn it over to the, uh, Council President and Administration if they want to address any of that.
Mr. Council President, may I, uh, address one question that was brought up, one point?
Please do.
Hey, uh, um, uh, Mr. Homiak, thank you very much, but, um, listen, the Board of Education needs to function, needs to get their work done, and, uh, so does the Township of Precipiny. Uh, we, you know, we, we do try to look out and avoid certain dates, but, you know, if we avoided each other so much, we wouldn't get work done, and they need to get their work done. We need to get our work done. I do not take that as a slight whatsoever, though I appreciate you looking out. And not only that, the State of the Township will be, uh, uh, available even after I'm done with the State of the Township. You'll be able to watch it on various social media. with the state of the township. You'll be able to watch it on various social media, including the website and on the cable channel. I think it repeats a couple of times on the cable channel. So we're making sure that it's as available as possible. That's all I have. I turn it back to the council president or to the DA to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Council President, I just want to ask Mr. Lot, is there a requirement for the Environmental Committee to, you know, provide any information to the zoning or planning board?
I'd have to check to see what our checklist requirements are for planning and zoning applications. Often where there's established an environmental commission, there's a requirement that the application be sent to the environmental development application, whether it be planning or zoning, to the environmental commission. The township doesn't have an environmental commission, they have an environmental advisory committee. We've actually just started to take a look at what the township would need to do in order to form an environmental commission.
And by the way, if I could add to that, we do have a member from the Environmental Committee on the planning board.
Committees, our committees are advisory committees, so there's no requirement. However, if there is an application that has an environmental issue and our township engineering department recommends it or the planning board president or the board of adjustment president recommends it, we can refer our applications for their feedback. But that's up to the planning board and the board of adjustment president whether we do that.
Well, by the way, the planning board, the planning board member that's also on the Environmental Committee is an environmental engineer. That's Judy Hernandez, by the way.
Does there, no one is on the zoning board, right? That's just a request, Council President? That's just, it would be the request by the-
We do have, we do have some engineers on the board of adjustment, too.
Oh.
I don't know if they're all environmental engineers, but they are engineers.
I just- I'm sorry.
We also have our own experts, our own engineer and our own traffic engineer and township engineer represented on both of those boards to keep, make sure that the township doesn't do anything foolish. But their department are looking at fertile ponds, steep slopes, zoning requirements, land use requirements, but not specifically environmental. But they could be referred if either department, as a matter of fact, even if a member of the public that participates in those meetings requests it, that we, that a particular issue is sensitive enough to send it to that committee, I'm sure it would be done.
Thank you. You know, I just want to make a comment on what they were talking about, the solar panels. The American Lung Association has given Morris County an F on the danger of carbons in the air. That was just something that I saw just recently. I just wanted to pass that along.
Okay. We also have Bob Venezia, who was unable to log on, so he has actually called in. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead. Bob, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I can hear you.
You can hear me, and they can hear you, so.
They can hear me?
Yes, you have five minutes, and go ahead.
Okay, I just want to wish everybody a happy new year. This is Bob Venezia from 102 Brooklyn Drive. All I have tonight is two questions. Well, two relating to payment in lieu of tax pilot agreements and two more questions relating to the upcoming budget. And I'll read through them all. First question is, according to New Jersey state law, does a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreement terminate if the property is sold to a for-profit entity such as a real estate investment trust or REIT? And what sections of the New Jersey law regulate the transferability of a pilot upon sale of a property? Second question. I would like to verify my understanding of a statement made by our attorney at the December 15 council meeting. He seemed to indicate that once a township, and in this case, Persippany, has approved zoning overlays that would allow affordable housing to be built on a property, then its affordable housing obligation for that site has been fulfilled, and the township has no further responsibility for the actual construction of the affordable units. Is my understanding correct? Third question. Now we're on to the budget. Regarding the budget, is the full cap, if, I'm sorry, if the full cap amount of 2% is levied, approximately how much of an increase in revenue dollars will that generate for the municipal side of the budget? And the last question is, what happens to money allocated in the current budget for a staff position that may not have been filled during the year? For example, can that money be used for other purposes in the department where the unfilled position occurred? And if not, where does that money go? And that's the end of the questions. If you need to, you know, repeat any of them, let me know. But then, you know, I'm done.
Okay.
The Council President, I'd be happy to take the two questions involving pilot.
I was just gonna ask you to do that.
Okay. The first question was, who are the eligible owners of these projects? By statute in New Jersey, the ownership entity has to be formed either as a not-for-profit urban renewal entity or it needs to be formed as a limited dividend, urban renewal entity. If you are a limited dividend entity, the profits that the entity can earn as a result of the real estate revenue are capped by statute. And what was the second question? I'm sorry, I don't remember what it was. I think it-
Second pilot question?
Yeah.
I wanted to verify my understanding of the statement made by Mr. Lot at the 1215 meeting. He seemed to indicate that a township, that once a township has approved zoning overlays that allow affordable housing to be built on a property, then its affordable housing obligation for that site is fulfilled, and the township has no further responsibility for the actual construction of the affordable units. Is my understanding correct?
Your understanding is partially correct. One of the obligations that we have pursuant to our settlement agreement is to take the necessary rezoning actions. There were other obligations of the township pursuant to that settlement agreement, including enactment of various fees, appointment of various officials, agreements to monitor compliance for affordability controls that are also part of our affordable housing obligation because they are contained in our affordable settlement agreement.
Okay, as for the budget questions.
Do you want me to read the next one? If the full cap amount of 2% is levied, approximately how much of an increase in revenue dollars will that generate for the municipal side of the budget?
Nick, I think we can answer that question quickly. We haven't got that far yet, so it would be premature to answer the question. And for the second question with regards to unfilled positions-
How much was it last year?
Well, I don't have that in front of me right now, but, you know, we could get that back to you instead of digging through some stuff right now. As far as unfilled positions, if you have a position in a municipal budget line, you know that for whatever reason, the money stays in that budget line and becomes one of two things. It's transferred at the end of the year to pay unexpected expenses, like overtime in that department or things like that. If it's not used, then it lapses in the surplus the following year. So that means that any money left in the 2020 budget doesn't become surplus in the township's budget till 2022. That's the short answer.
Okay.
Okay, that's, you know, that was my question, so I guess I'll hang up now. Thank you.
All right, Bob, thank you. Thank you, Fred. All right, looks like we have, let's see. We have a Mr. Ramkumar Sridhar. Can we please unmute him, please?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to let me speak at this time. My name is Ramkumar Sridharan. I live in Number Four Autumn Bridge Road, Morris Plains, within Glenmount Common Association. And the reason why I'm, you know, I wanted to speak is we have been following up regarding the position of our roads, our community, like all the roads within our community. There is some confusion about, like, the position of the road has not been transferred from the builder to the township. So I just wanted to follow up because we still haven't heard whether that, you know, the position has been transferred from the builder to the township. Just wanted to follow up on that.
Council President, may I?
Please do.
We've been working with the engineering department for some time, and engineering department had to go through a number of records. The Glenmount project is, starts in about 1992, I think. I think the final phases of it, actually, some of the final phases, I believe, are still under construction, but most of the work was done as about 2008. There are about 20 different approvals. There are literally thousands of pages of agreements that we've been through. We've taken a preliminary look at this. I actually assigned special counsel before the holiday. Antonelli Cantor was assigned as a special counsel, and all those documents were sent to them before the holidays, and they're currently under review. This is, this is a bit of a riddle to unwind here, given the number of approvals and the amount of time that has elapsed to build what we know as Glenmount. So we're taking a look at it. Please be patient. It's not as easy as it sounds to determine exactly what phases may or may not have been dedicated.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's a lot of progress have been made, so I really appreciate it. And thanks, thanks so much for looking into it.
No problem. We're on it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Looks like there are no more participants at this time, so can I please entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, Grignani.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to ordinances, since this is just an agenda meeting, we're not voting, just have you guys review the ordinance. Now moving along to the non-consent agenda under resolutions. If we could please just review those resolutions. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Moving along to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Wondere Bay recommends authorization for payment to authorize this payment of the January 8, 2021 regular payroll estimated at 1.8 million each. And number two, payment of bills from bachelor list of December 31, 2020, estimate totaling $1,993,904.84. Can I please have a motion to approve the above authorization?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carrify, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero. Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Okay, now please have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carrify, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Okay, everyone, we are adjourned. Wish you all a good night.
Night, everyone.
Have a good night.